As you get ready to re-enter your home, be advised we've been without power for a day or two days. Is the food similarly spoiled in your refrigerator and your freezer? Make sure you give that one or two days to get cold again, refreeze again, look at the dates. Those things that may have been perishable, throw those away. It's going to be easier cleanup for your freezer items, leave them frozen, and then be able to dispose of them properly. When you get into your house, make sure you're checking all your appliances to make sure that if your oven's on, or other appliances may be on. Pardon me. And then if you have smoke alarms or alarm systems that may be tied to an alarm company, those may go off. Notify 911 right away that those are false alarms. Otherwise, you're going to have a normal response from law and fire services. Do a walk around your house, make sure it's safe. If you do have any concerns or issues, do not hesitate to activate 911 if it's a fire or medical type of event, or call your local law enforcement if it's related to a criminal event in or around your home. And then if there are PG&E issues, contact PG&E right away. Don't touch any electrical lines, and be safe.
Hi, everybody. Welcome again tonight. There are some chairs back on this side for anybody who's still standing. There's some other chairs that are still on the sides back here, so if anyone needs chairs, no reason to stand if you don't need to. At this point, everybody can hear? Is that a good sound level? Okay. I want to introduce Russ Perdok, the mayor of the city of Clear Lake. He'll introduce what we've got to tell you tonight, as well as some of the other folks who are here. So, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming out. Real quick, we have a lot to be thankful for. A lot to be thankful for for our representatives here, and all the hard work that they've been doing. But we also have a lot to be thankful for as far as no loss of life, and no significant injuries. If you would, I need your support. I know the other leaders here, the council members, the board of supervisors. We can use your help, and I know we can use help from our God above. So if you'd just join with me, I would appreciate it. Thank you very much. Our dear heavenly Father, we call on you and invoke your Spirit to join us tonight, that you can come into our hearts and help lead us as we move forward in this tragedy, and we can make good decisions, and we can make healthy progress toward the restoration of what was lost. We ask that you lift those people up that have lost so much, and who are struggling right now, and that you will hold them in your loving arms. We ask for all these things, and we give you all the glory through your Son, Jesus the Christ. Amen. Thank you all, everyone, for letting me do that. Speaking of dignitaries, I'd like to introduce a few. I also want to recognize that we welcome anybody here. There was some concern last night, there were people living outside the city limits. This isn't just for the city of Clear Lake. This is for everyone in our area, everyone in our county that has been affected by this fire, and even those who are coming in to help support us in the fire. I ask that you give them any help you can, any help or support that you can, as we battle this together, and we come together again as a stronger community. First, I'd like to introduce our Board of Supervisors. I apologize that I didn't do that last night. I did recognize that they were here. For our district, for the city of Clear Lake, I'd like to introduce Mr. Jim Steele. Supervisor District 3. And Mr. Jeff Smith, our Supervisor District 2. And I don't see Moke here, but Moke Simon, Supervisor District 1, who has been integral and such a valid part of this recovery and the evacuation. Supervisor District 1 is also very involved, I guess you could say, at the Twin Pine Casino, our evacuation center. And I just want to thank him for all the work he's done in supporting it. Next, I'd like to recognize Supervisor Rob Brown, Supervisor District 5, Kelseyville Area, Cottlemont, for all the work he's done in the fire recoveries that have preceded this, and I hope he'll give us a few words there in a few minutes. Okay, so to the meat and potatoes, let me call on our local fire chief, Fire Chief Willie Sepeda, for our current update for the city limits. And then I'm going to introduce Battalion Chief Mike Wink from CDF for the Clear Lake Oaks and County regions. Oh, I apologize. I also want to recognize Under Sheriff Chris Macedo, Lake County Sheriff's Office, and the Sheriff's Office staff that's here. Been very supportive of us, and we couldn't do it without their help. This is a cooperative effort. The county and city obviously have borders, and we're working in and amongst those borders. They've also been very instrumental in getting us extra patrol staff, working with Lieutenant Selly and our CPD staff, to keep your homes safe during the evacuation. So anyway, without further ado, chief supervisor.
Welcome. So we're making significant progress on the fire. Continue to monitor 24/7 crews that coordinated effort between local, state, and federal agencies. Instead, we made a lot of forward progress through today, and continue through the next few days until we get things buttoned up collaboratively with all the agencies for the repopulation, re-entry points. Been working with Leaping, the other organizations, to assist with any animal evacuations, one of the different agencies coming to deal with hazards and materials, propane leaks, and those other life, safety issue concerns. Continue to work with them. And like I said, with Mike Wink, I'm going to have Mike give an update of the percentage of containment of the fire, and the overall acreage, and then he probably has a little bit better idea of what committed total state resources that are committed to our incident as we battle and struggle with the other counties that have increased their activities in fires. Ours is bedding down, thank goodness, so we'll hopefully make them turn to a positive outcome. So, Mike?
Very similar to what Chief Sepeda spoke to within the city. Things are, the containment lines that were, have been established through the day, continue to be reinforced and improved, and mop-up continues in from those containment lines as we do incremental mop-up, 100 feet, 200 feet, 300 feet. And the goal is, obviously, everything visible will be mopped up as the end result of that going through the process. We continue to receive resources that have been requested through the morning, and through, even through late this afternoon. Folks continue to come into the incident, and they're immediately assigned to the fire line to continue to hold and improve and mop that stuff up, so that we can make it as safe as possible, and make sure that everything holds, and get the folks back in there, so we can start the recovery process.
Thank you, Mike.
It's, the acreage has not changed. It's still 2,500 acres at 15% contained. But that will continue, the containment will continue to increase, we anticipate, over the next few days.
Now I have to reposition this because I'm short.
I have a question. How come the CalFire website has not been updated?
The question was, do we know why the CalFire website has not been updated?
It was this morning, and so I found all this information.
Just a minute, one at a time, please.
There's a Facebook that says, follow, like the CalFire page. It says how many acres and how many percent containment is.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
So there's a lady sitting here, to my left, your right, that indicated on the CalFire Facebook page and on the webpage earlier today, she saw the updated information that was...
Except it makes no mention, unlike the other fires, it makes absolutely no mention of evacuation areas.
Okay.
More information about the cases.
All right, folks. We're going to get to questions at the end, just like we did last night. Same format. We want to get the information out to you. There may be people who can't stay very long, need to get out here. We want to be mindful of that. So let's get the information out, and then we can pinpoint specific questions afterward. Thank you very much. Next, I'd like to bring up Lieutenant Selly, our acting chief, for updates for security. I want to give him kudos. He's fighting a pretty good headache. He's been working about seven hours to do just that, to get you back in your homes in those areas that we can repopulate. So again, we're working with inspectors, and those folks that are going in to make sure that it's safe before we repopulate. The, if I may, Lieutenant, the main concern, if we bring people in to repopulate prematurely before the fire is fully contained, and then we have to re-evacuate you, or we've got fire apparatus trying to get down the streets, it becomes, for a technical term, a cluster, trying to get emergency equipment where they need to be without running over people trying to get out. So again, that's why we've got those in place. They're still making assessments to make sure that everything is safe, because again, we learned in the Clayton and Valley fires, just how fast this fire behavior can change, and just how fast it can move in on us when we're thinking we're ready, and we find out we're not. We talked about defensible space. Folks, look at what's happening in those counties around us. Yes, we're struggling, but I have to be honest, with CalFire's looking awareness and resources, there are thousands of people there, and we've got hundreds of people involved here. And sad but true, they're looking at how to save the most people and the most property. So please be patient. I can't give enough kudos to the gentlemen standing here, men and women standing here, and out on the lines out there for all their work. But anyway, Lieutenant Selly brought up briefly on the condition of city and his activities.
Thank you. I'm happy to see all of you here tonight. Hopefully, you folks have gotten NICSOL. Can I see a show of hands of how many people have NICSOL? Okay. If you do not have NICSOL, here's how you do it. On your phone, I would like you to text the 2 person, or in the 2 line, 888-777.
Write that down.
In the message portion, I want you to type "Clear Lake PD," one word. As you do that, you will start to get messages. It's going to become very important in the next several days, hours, weeks to come, as you get important information. So please, yes, what you're going to do is, on the 2 line, type in 888-777. And your message will be "Clear Lake PD," one word, and then hit the send button, and you'll start to get NICSOLs. You can also do that with the Sheriff's Department NICSOLs as well. As the mayor mentioned, we've been working very diligently trying to get you folks back into your homes and things like that. There's a great deal of work and discussions and things that go into that. We can't just repopulate an area. We have to make sure it's safe. We're working on damage assessments all day, and trying to get that information, and relay that back to CalFire and those things, and that takes a great deal of time. I want to thank the people that have helped us with Fish and Wildlife, California Highway Patrol, Lakeport Police Department, Lake County Sheriff's Department, code enforcement, volunteers, explorers, everybody that has helped us be able to maintain these hard closures. It's not easy for those personnel, because we understand you folks want to get back into your homes, and we want you to be back in your homes. But we also have a job to do of keeping the firefighters safe, the folks that need to return home safe, their properties, try to keep their belongings safe from looters and things like that. And it's very difficult to maintain that if we just let people walk in and do that sort of stuff. So that's why it's been very important. So we've been working diligently with that. So you can also, as far as NICSOL goes, you can also sign up for it on your computer. I realize that the internet has been a problem over the last couple of days. I believe that some of that at least has been restored. But you can go on the NICSOL website and sign up for it there as well. I just didn't want to forget that.
Is there any timeline when you go back home? Please don't shout out your questions. We'll take questions at the end, please.
Like I said, please subscribe to NICSOL. You may get some information. That's going to become very important in the next several hours, several days, several weeks. Okay? That will become important for you to get that necessary information and things like that. Again, we all want you to go home safely, and see your properties and things like that, but we also have to do that safely. We can't just let you go in there and be unsafe. So, is there anything else you'd like me to cover?
Stick around.
I also want to thank our volunteers at policing. They've been doing a great job at our roadblocks. We've had several members in residence, and I understand the frustration. I too have been evacuated and can't go home. Walmart has become our friend as far as some clothes and things that we need, and I saw a lot of other folks there displaced there too. So I mean, we're all in this together, folks. We want to get you home as quick as we can, and please, if you didn't get that NICSOL information, or you missed it, we need to get it to you, because that's how we're going to notify you when we begin to repopulate. That's the best way to reach out and do that. So you need to have that on your phone. When we are going to repopulate, again, help me out here, Lieutenant, but we're going to, we have to have a hard closure. That means that the roads are going to be blocked, so we can open up the streets in the Parkwood subdivision. That will likely be the first place that is reopened. It is not reopened now, but just to prepare you for that future event. But we're still going to have hard closures at Lake Shore Drive and Country Club. That's the area that goes out into what used to be the Clear Lake Park area, out toward the Goose Neck. Hard closures again at San Joaquin and Country Club. That's the upper road that takes you out into the area by the Goose Neck. And then there'll be another hard closure at Bush and Sulphur Bank. That's coming in from Sulphur Bank through Borax. So they're still actively fighting fire there, so that would be the hard closure. Questions at the end?
I know, but this isn't the question. I was just down in the City Hall. They have left, they removed the barricades, and the public works said you are free to go to your house. I've already been to my home.
Well, that's news to me.
So if the 17th is currently open and...
That's news to me. Okay, thank you. The streets that were made closed is pretty much everything out toward the Goose Neck, so, well, that's news to me. Let me bring up the city manager, or do you know, Lieutenant?
The barricade areas have changed recently, and you should be getting messages about that soon. The barricade points are now, have moved back to the areas that have not been affected by the fire. So some folks want to go home, may be able to do so, and you should be getting some information if you're in those areas that are not affected. Understand that as you enter those areas, there's still, you still need to be cautious. You need to be cautious of things. If you see something that doesn't look right, or it looks like a hazard, you need to report those things to authorities right away. As you go in and enter these areas that your homes are, be careful. Drive safely. There's still a lot of pedestrian traffic that are there. You also have fire crews that you have to watch out for, and be careful around those folks. Give them the ride away, because they need it. They're going to emergencies and things like that. Also, we've had reports of drones in the air and things like that. Please, don't do those things. That interferes with the airspace that is much needed for the helicopters and things that need to come in and continue this fight against this fire as it spreads to other areas. But as you enter, repopulate this area, please, please be cautious. Take your time, and I just say, I'd say, I appreciate that you're here with us, and you were able to leave in an orderly fashion, and so no one was injured.
Thanks. I'm Greg. I'm the city manager. Just to kind of clarify a little bit more, we don't make the decision to give out mandatory evacuations just willy-nilly. There's a lot of thought that goes into that. It's about trying to protect you, trying to protect your property, trying to protect the first responders. We also don't take the decision to change that. Quiet, please. We don't make the decision to change that and lift the evacuation lightly either. There's a lot of work that has to get involved with CalFire, with the fire district, with a number of other agencies. Today, we've had strike teams from the county coming out, doing assessments. We've been working with PG&E. We've been working with all those other agencies. We're currently in the process of relocating our barriers, and you're going to be getting a NICSOL probably very shortly, as soon as we get things all in place, letting you know that it's safe. That will be the official notification that we're able to lift those barriers. But right now, we're still trying to get everything finalized, so please, we appreciate your patience. We appreciate your cooperation with everything that's going on. Mayor, thank you.
Again, remember, logistically, it's hard to move crews around. It's hard to get things done instantly. So again, have patience with our public works. Under Sheriff, did you want to address the group as far as issues involving the county areas in the burn, and other evacuated areas in the Oaks? I know Dr. calling on you without any warning, but...
Chris Macedo from the Sheriff's Office. Excuse me, my voice is just about gone. Sheriff Martin, kind of being here, and it's kind of off-topic a little bit, but unfortunately, the Tubbs Fire in Sonoma County is now creeping towards the Lake, Sonoma County line. So we are addressing that issue right now with the potential. And I'm trying to emphasize the word "potential" for some potential evacuations in the Middletown area right now, so we're doing some planning to see if we're actually going to do those. So you can't make it here for that right now. But our plan will be similar to that of the city of Clear Lake as far as repopulation. A lot of hip dangers out there that you don't see. There's hot ash pits out there. When these fires come through, they're extremely hot. They burn metal. You're going to hear a little information from Environmental Health. I'll tell you about the dangers of the burnt metals out there that pose health risks and everything else like that, so we don't want people just walking through there and exposing themselves to some of these dangerous metals. So as Mayor Perdok said, and most of the other speakers have said, there are legitimate reasons for keeping you folks out of there right now, and it's for your well-being. I know you folks want to get back into your houses, and we want to do everything we possibly can to get you back in there, but we want to do it safely. We don't want to put you in harm's way. So we're praying for everybody. We're praying for good weather. We're praying for a strong attack by your firefighters and everything, to get this thing knocked down and start the recovery process. So Lake County's strong, folks.
And do we still have Randy here? Any updates from Environmental Health? Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. My name is Ray Raminsky. I'm County Environmental Health Director. Our staff has been today in the field with safety assessments, along with other professionals to evaluate extended damage and those hazards. Now, excuse me. For you guys that lost your home, I'm truly sorry. That's a big thing, and I feel for you guys. When law enforcement allows repopulation and return, you need to be aware that the dust and the debris is a very real hazard. We have some information on, details of the risks, so that you're, we don't want you to be an unnecessary risk to yourself and your neighbors and your community when you come back. It's all about dust management, keep yourself safe. If you have a home that's completely destroyed, we're trying to work up a program similar to last year and the year before that, where a state-sponsored, state-funded, state-managed program can come to your home with your permission, and do all the debris removal, and then leave you a clean lot eventually. That program is still being put together. It's a little too early for pretty details. In the days to come, that will be taking place. And I have a few pages, I have a few copies of a one-page information handout, and so you can look at this if you like. It's all about safety for yourself, your community as you return your home. The dust and the ash is a hazard, and keep yourself safe and stay safe.
Thank you, Randy. Mr. Perdok, just tell her, Russ, and we can distribute or have it on a table. Thank you. Thank you. We'll get these to all the folks who want one. Thank you very much. Yeah, please be aware, some of the homes that we've had in our city were older. They used things, weird things like lead paint back in the day. They used other things like asbestos exterior coverings. And when those things burn, obviously, they come into the dirt and into the dust, and if we inhale that, we could have some long-term health problems. So again, thank you very much for being here tonight and sharing that with our folks. We're focused on recovery, so that's what we're looking at now. The fire people have done, the professionals have done such a great job at now, you know, extinguishing that fire, getting it contained, or getting better containment. I want you to know that the city staff has been working since this morning on what do we do now for the rebuild, because that's what we want to do and focus on. So we are planning that. I also want to introduce Donna Becknell, our Conacta Unified School Superintendent. I didn't warn her that I was going to do this, so she's coming up here, as they say, flat-footed, but just an update on what's happening with Conacta Unified School District and the schools as far as closures and those things go. So thanks for being here, Donna. I appreciate it. And Brock, you're next. I'm going to call on you, so you can have a little more to prepare for.
So, good evening. We will be closing school for tomorrow, which is Wednesday. We are anticipating reopening on Thursday. Part of the issues we're looking at is making sure that we can get people back into school safely, also the air quality. If we do open on Thursday, we would not open Pomos School. We want to make sure that we get in there, and make sure all of the rooms are clean and ready for students to re-attend. But for tomorrow, all schools in Conacta Unified are closed.
Again, he was here last night from the county superintendent of schools, Brock Volkenberg. Thank you.
Well, this is the fourth community presentation I've been to, and as I look at it, the crowd, I can tell that people are ready to move forward, and that takes great strength and courage, especially in light of the unknown at this point in time. I know the schools are ready to move forward too. I know Miss Becknell and Conacta Unified School District have been working diligently to make sure that they are open and ready to go as soon as possible. Unfortunately, they're not the only school district that will be closed tomorrow. Both Middletown Unified and Kelseyville Unified will be closed tomorrow because of the unknown safety conditions regarding air quality at this point in time. They too will be open as soon as we have a better understanding of how best to move forward. So thank you, and good luck to each and every one of you.
Woodland Community College, I want to thank Brock for reminding me of this. Woodland Community College has also announced that they will be closed tomorrow, and again, that's a day-by-day decision for them as well. Thank you, Brock. Again, thank you all for being here again tonight. We do appreciate it. Last, definitely not least, I'd like to invite Supervisor Brown. Do you have something else, Chief? Okay, Supervisor Brown, to come up and update us on how things are going with the county and city.
Well, as has been stated before, can't tell you how hard it is, even after, you know, two years of doing this, how hard it is to sit here and watch you guys suffer and go through so much pain. Hopefully, you know, soon, the job that your city folks are doing is remarkable. I know there's some frustration. I get that, and it's going to get worse in some cases, because it may seem like things are happening that people up here aren't quite aware of, but I can tell you, I've used this analogy several times, and we use it for a long time. You basically build a plane while you're flying it, because there's a lot of things that we, you just can't plan on. We went through the Valley Fire, we went through the Clayton Fire. You still can't plan for an event like this. But what I can tell you is, some of you are out in the county, some of you are in the city, but when it comes to all of us up here, there are no boundaries. And the county is committed to work with the city. We've already begun the efforts for recovery. Recovery started yesterday. We got to start and get you guys back in and get this cleanup done. I've been working with the state folks already, Senator McGuire, Assemblymember Aglar Curry, and OES, Ray Ram...
and OES Ray Raminsky, as he mentioned earlier, Cal Recycle, and working with Ray on getting this effort going. Congressman Thompson and Congressman Garamendi, all of those folks are committed, and we're working with them right now to begin this process. The advantage that we do have is that over the last two years, we've been able to build some lifelong relationships with the state and federal folks. They know us. They know how hard we work. They know what our character is made of, and they're willing to step in and help us right now. Unfortunately for, unfortunately for us probably, unfortunately for the other counties, they're just now learning how to do all this stuff that we went through two years ago. So we're able to start mobilizing right away. We're already starting the effort to begin the process of getting this cleanup done, and we'll work in the days future, too. For those of you that are going to begin your cleanup process, we'll be working with the city folks. We'll get a process done, so it'll be seamless. The county and the city, we're going to be working on this cleanup altogether. I can assure you of that. One thing I would like to do, and again, regardless of where you live, my phone number is 349-2628. I guarantee you, I won't have all the answers. The answers that I give you, sometimes you won't like, but I'll give you what I have, but I will find somebody that has the answer. I won't try to just buffalo my way through. I'll find out who has the answer to your question, and no matter how small, how large it is, we'll find it. It may be small to some, but it's big to you, and so please call me anytime. And I know Supervisor Steele will also give you his phone number, too. He's representative of that North District, so he'll give his phone number. But we are committed to this. There's a whirlwind of emotions that you're all going to go through, I can assure you. Get the help you need. There's help out there that we have for a lot of crisis and that type of thing. This isn't an emotional thing. It's a very tragic loss. There's going to be grief. There's going to be a lot of stuff. Make sure you get the help that you need. Don't try to tough it out, because it's a difficult situation to go through on your own, so make sure you take advantage of the resources that are available, and we're all here for you.
Just want to let you know that the Board of Supervisors is a team.
Sometimes you're going to get an answer that maybe you don't like and you want to hear from somebody else. District Three is my district. You are my folks when you're out there on that peninsula, and all those folks are out there the same as the people inside the city, but we're going to make sure that you get the answers that you want, even though there's a large group here. Every single one of you is an individual, and you deserve that respect. My phone number is 295-6198. So call me if you need anything, and Rob is going to be right there. I can call him. I can call anybody else, but you know, there's a lot of people trying to work on a lot of these cases, so if you don't like the answer you get, call me. I'll check on it, make sure everything is the same as you heard before. So we want to make sure you're in and safe, just like they said. The fire season is not over yet, so be careful. We still have a lot more fire season, and if you look at the record of fires, every 40 to 60 years, this is what we have here in California. But every 40 to 60 years, 60 years, it seems to get bigger each time. So clear the space back from houses. Tell other people to do it. You guys are all experts now. That's what we need to do going forward, get that brush down, and as we do this again and everybody gets back in their home, we've got to keep it fire safe. 295-6198. Thank you.
Anybody just get an Nixle?
Yes.
We were trying to get that out, but I didn't want to release it prematurely because we didn't want to have any hazards if we had to rescind it. I don't want to send buddy people home and then say, okay, sorry, you've got to evacuate. But the Nixle has gone out. We can repopulate the Parkwood subdivision and those streets that were previously identified as an evacuation mandated evacuation area. Sadly, for those folks in my neighborhood, we're in the burn area, and we will not see that lifted for a while. Like I was saying last night, there's several of us going to need to plan for the long haul. The telephone poles are gone. The infrastructure out there is gone, and there's a lot of hazards, as the under Sheriff pointed out, and environmental health. So please be careful. I also want to introduce or recognize Sean Swatashi. Please stand up, Sean. Media Com Supervisor Manager. He got our internet back, though, folks. That's a great job, because that is such an important part now in our lives. Did anybody have an idea, something else you'd like to share? Is the Vice Mayor back? I saw him. He had a phone call. He likes to do a do-over at our meetings, so oftentimes he likes to add some to the meeting, and right now, Chief Sepeda would like to have a do-over.
Not really a do-over, it's a... Just when we look at the re-entry repopulation, they're going to re-energize your properties. So...
Turn the power on, right, Chief?
Yeah, turn the power on, yeah. Macromanagement versus micromanagement. So what you may find is you've been without power for 40 hours. Your food may be spoiled. Your things from your freezer may be frozen, may have thawed out. Ideally, let them get cold again. Let them refreeze before you dispose them. It makes it a little bit easier that way. Make sure when you get home to check if you may have had appliances that are on when you evacuated. If there are any issues, definitely, if you have a problem, if it's a fire issue or EMS issue, call 911 right away, and refer those other items, so of course, to PG&E. The other thing is you may have fire or burglar alarms that may activate when your power goes back on. If it is a false alarm, make sure that you do some type of notification. You're going to have three or four fire engines parked out in front of your home. So like I said, with your food, make sure that you're really diligent. Milk and those things that may have been spoiled for 48 hours. We haven't had under-degree weather, but still, we don't want food poisoning to be a secondary for your re-entering of your property. The other ones, we talked about re-entering areas where we've had structure loss. The repopulation, the re-entry we're doing tonight is because you weren't in those high-impacted areas. The dust particulates are definitely a concern. You may find that dust and stuff inside your home. Try not to make it airborne. When we get into the areas where there's structure loss, there's going to be a whole new series of the way we re-entry. And if you looked at how we did the Clayton Fire, we had a center set up with items that you're going to need: gloves, garbage bags, respiratory protection, water. So what we're doing for you folks is really the lower scale, there's not a lot of potential hazards. There's dust and those things. You are out of the danger of that fire zone, but if you are in an area that your home was lost or adjacent to home was lost when we do those repopulation areas, there's a whole new element that slows things down, and that's because of the hazards, sharp metals and those things. There's going to be a whole different degree of how we work with you folks in that re-entry, and we will have, similar to what we did in the Clayton repopulation, is a ability to come to a facility and think of those items that you're going to need. We'll also set up some, deliver some of those items, and like I said, that's just a whole bigger scale, so we'll make sure that what you guys see tonight when you go home is going to be different when we open up those areas that have a lot of structural damage. The other thing is that, you know, there's a lot of children that are affected directly, indirectly, a lot of collateral damage. So what we did during the Clayton Fire, it's the same thing that South Lake County did during the Valley Fire, is that as the school opens on Thursday, we'll have fire personnel at the school to greet those children. So it's very critical that the children know that we're, not only as parents, I have four kids of my own from the age of five to 15, is that we reinforce the safety to those kids. And then I think it's no better time to plan our evacuation routes with our kids with the lights out, collection points, accountability, smoke alarms, fire alarms. There's no better time now to make sure that our kids are prepared, but it's more important that those kids know that they're protected. So we will be there at the schools, if nothing else, just to meet, whether we're in our yellows or blues, is that those kids have a safe environment to live in. The past three years, a lot of PTSD, post-traumatic stress disorder that these kids may be dealing with. So like Brock had talked about in the end, there's a lot of assistance out there for them through the schools and different ad hoc groups and things like that. Take advantage that your kids aren't acting normal, acting out, or things like that. It can be very traumatic because they're seeing what's going on with their parents. And so like, if you have any questions, you know, our phone number at the station is 994-2170, where there are two, maybe not solving your problems, but we'll give you the correct direction. And then my personal cell phone, 489-0966. And like I said, I just want you guys to realize that we repopulate you folks in the Parkwoods, and then we go to that. There's a whole series of different dynamical things that are going to happen, and we'll provide you the tools to give you a safe environment as far as personal protection, gloves, eye protection, respiratory protection, the essential minimum tools you need to do the job. So thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to give you some information. Last year, when we had evacuations in the avenues, we had patrols around the clock, and we had one burglary reported. If you respond back to your homes and you find something that's not right or that's missing or something like that, please call the... If it's in the city of Clear Lake, please call the Clear Lake Police Department, and you can reach us at 994-8251, and just press 1, and you'll get our dispatcher, and then they will create a call. We'll have to prioritize the calls. If it's not emergency, it may take us some time because of the other emergencies that are going on that we're still dealing with. But please, what is a good idea is to take a good assessment of your property. If you do find something missing or you're missing some property, get all the information ready so that that can be provided to the officers when they make a report and things like that. Okay? Thank you. As we're wrapping up, you had someone, something else, Craig?
Jeff.
Yes. Jeff Smith would like to address Supervisor District, too. Glad you're being here.
Wouldn't be anywhere else. You know, as most of yours, most of you I've represented ever since I went on the board 19 years ago. Slowly, my district has gotten smaller now in the area that I used to be all the way out to Winflower Point, all the way down the Oaks Jim Steele has, so I'm glad he has it. And no, I'm not, I don't mean it that way. I'm glad that he's here, because actually, we're represented by really four supervisors down here right now, and it's fantastic. I just can't say enough about make sure you have Rob Brown's phone number. He has stepped up to the Board of Supervisors and taken all this recovery effort on because he wanted to. There's nobody better to call than Rob, because he has everything on speed dial. What I would do if you called me, and my phone number is 272-3829, I'd probably call Rob and ask him, because seriously, he has done this so much that he really knows all the ins and outs of it. So I'm glad to have him as a fellow supervisor, glad to be able to lean on him when we need him. Let's just use all the resources. Even though you're within the city of Clear Lake and the city represents you on the political issues and stuff in the city, we still represent you with environmental health, Ray Raminsky, mental health issues, and social services. So don't be afraid to call any of us. We'll get you the answers and get you back on your feet. I've got to say, I'm right here with you. My house is gone after 31 years. So, you know, we all got to hang in them together. Thank you.
Anything else anybody wants to add while we're here? I just have something, and then we'll get to questions. If you know someone who has a vacation home, whether it's in the city limits or outside the city limits, that they're not currently occupied. If you know somebody who has a rental that may be available or something, they were thinking about renting. If you would be so kind as to consider putting that open for people who've lost their homes, opening up that house. If you don't live in the area and you're watching this on a video stream, there are good management companies, not just in Clear Lake, but around the lake. If you would like to contact them, give them an address of your home, they can look at it, they can take care of all the things. We have families who are displaced. They're going to need a place to live until they get their home rebuilt. So again, coming together as a community. We have a lot of vacant homes that are used for vacation homes and other things. It would be wonderful to see if we could open that up to the rental market. That's pretty much concluding as far as my remarks go, other than I just want to thank you all so much for pulling together as a community, for helping out your neighbor and helping out the folks that you can, and for being patient with us. As Rob, I think, eloquently said, we're flying the plane as we're building it. We're trying to do this and look at each of the things that have come up, deal with it then, and we always have your best interest at heart. So questions? If you guys want to come a little closer, I'm sure we got a few. Yes, sir.
I just was wondering if there's any time estimate you've heard from PG&E on when Howard might come back to the Parkwood area?
I have not heard that. And I don't believe we had a representative here last night, but he didn't have an answer when I asked him that question either. Yes, ma'am?
I was just wondering if you could reiterate the hard closure, since you talked about...
Absolutely. Question was, can I reiterate or repeat the hard closures? So I've been here my whole life, so bear with me as I try to describe this. In the Clear Lake Park area, what used to be the Clear Lake Park by the Clear Lake Park Post Office, Country Club Drive and Lake Shore Drive intersect, for a lack of a better landmark, the old boatworks. Okay? That area, that intersection is one hard closure. That means you can't get through there. The next hard closure is going to be the Upper Road, as we used to call it, San Joaquin, that goes out toward the Goose Neck. We call it the Upper Road. That is also a hard closure. What it means by hard closure is you can't get through. We still have people that decided not to evacuate, even though we wish they would have. So they're in there, and we wish them the best, but if they come out, they can't go back in. So if you're watching this on the stream, if you leave your house in that area until it's opened up for repopulation, you're not going to be able to go back in. If you need food and supplies, we welcome you to come in and get those things, but again, you're not going to be able to go back in. The next hard closure is Bush and Borax Lake Road or Sulphur Bank Road, and that is out past the Parkwoods headed toward Borax Lake and over Sulphur Bank to Clear Lake Oaks area. That is a hard closure because those areas need to be still secured while they're still actively fighting the fire, and we want to keep all the fire personnel unoccupied with people who get lost or whatever. We want to keep you out of that area while there's still, could be some potential dangers. Does that answer your question, ma'am?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Eagle?
North Drive-Sulphur Bank? Assuming that's our hard...
That's also closed, but that's the county area, so I don't want to speak to that. Next question? Yes, sir, in the front.
When can we get in and get first of all, I...
Into where?
We can't, because I live on 13th.
That area is now open. You can go right now if you'd like.
It's 4:00 and it wasn't letting me into the park.
Well, we just opened it up as we're having this meeting. Next question? Yes, in the back.
Okay, I can hear the question.
I apologize. The question was, can I get my stuff on 13th? 13th Street? Yes, in the blue.
I just wanted to add...
Lieutenant Selly's going to come over and help you with that right now, but the Parkwoods is now open to repopulate. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am? Why yes, ma'am?
It's her. It's my question. Are we not going to get any information regarding parcel numbers that are destroyed or not destroyed?
Yes. Yes, last night, it was presented by fire staff that we're going to be doing that now as we go in and begin the re-inspections, and that will be posted on the windows at City Hall by APN number?
Yeah.
By APN at Abrams?
When?
I'm going to bring Chief Sepeda up, thankfully, and he can explain it to you. Just a second.
Yeah, Public Works Director Doug Haren worked on that today. I don't think that it's been solidified, but it's still a process of validating those APN numbers with the maps in the assessor's office, so it's a little bit more of a tedious process. So I'll get what's done and find out when we post what we have that's been validated, kind of day by day or as it is updated for you guys.
You didn't get your phone number?
489-0966.
Yes, sir. I came in a little late, so I may have missed it, but where is the fire and where does it seem to be likely hitting at this time?
I told you not to go far.
We have not seen any fire growth, so the fire isn't going any one direction. It's backing down in some areas, and those are areas we talked about. When we look at 15%, as I talked about last night, is 15% is its cold 100 to 300 foot in. So that other part is maybe locked down a little bit. foot in. So that other part is maybe locked down a little bit as far as where the fire is. We've got it on the backside of East Lake Drive, all the way top of Sulphur Bank, where we have the hard road closure at Eighteenth and Bush and Sulphur Bank. And the rest of it is out past the Mendocino at the Lake Shore Drive area, out to the Goose Neck, and then just this side of Winflower Point area.
Awesome.
So the twenty-five-hundred acres has not grown. There's just a lot of areas that are steep and our major concern, as I talked last night, is that every hour that that tree smulders, it becomes a widow maker. So limbs, trees, telephone poles. So until we can mitigate those, you know, that those closures and that remain in place and we're diligently working on that. And like Sean's in the, in the, in the audience there and he's working collectively with PG&E to get the poles backed up, restore their park, get our power poles backed up, get the AT&amp;T lines back in place, so that we actually have internet and we've got our phone service and power to those areas.
Hey Willie, before we down, we had one over here.
I'm too, so at fall school, they have the house down normal on weekend. Is that a schedule?
Yes, it's open now. You can jump in.
Yeah. So when we talked about that area, really from MODOC, which is one of the closures we had, all the way down to Eighteenth Street. And then that is, Bush comes around and ties into that part of Sulphur Bank. So that's kind of an unknown street there. Eighteenth is kind of the last road that goes to the northwest towards the lake that has been undeveloped by homes. But everything within that area is open. You're free to roam. And like I said, we should hopefully have utilities restored there shortly. And we'll check with PG&E representative to try to get you a little better timeline. And if so, then we'll try to get that on NICSOL as soon as we can as well.
Yes, ma'am?
Is the water quality okay? Like, if you're near schools or, you know, does it, I saw something about oil in water. Does everything, can you cook with your water or?
Yeah, and I know that majority of that area is serviced by Golden State. Keith Dayheart, I've been in conversations with him. I think they did have a water oil order out there. And what I'd recommend is to contact Golden State first thing in the morning. For safety purposes, we've been without power for forty-eight hours. Is run the taps, but until you validate that with Keith Dayheart from Golden State, as I would probably kind of follow those orders, should be able to bathe in it. But as far as consumption, like, not going to bring the plastic tea or anything, but yeah, boil that water first.
Yes, ma'am, in the back.
So we addressed a brand new news. I know you mentioned evacuating, possibly, the how come the fire is coming up already, it's speeding up the park. And I have a possibility of, we're all connected in this other fire, this way and that way, and it shows me a more. The people over there are starting to freak out. We have back to back to over there, we're really worried about this.
Rob, real quick, there was an update given when we were down at Twin Pine earlier. There's a road closure at Western Mine Road and Highway Twenty-Nine is closed right now. Can't go over, can't come back. The fire, the sheriff, the reason the sheriff's not here and supervisor Simon is because they went over there to get eyes on, to take a look at it. Chief Bertelli was down there. It was around seventy-five acres at that time. We were getting reports that it was close to Robert Louis Stevenson at the time. Get NICSOL. NICSOL, that's how everybody's going to find out. So right now, there is no, under Sheriff Macedo, correct me if I'm wrong?
We're on code red message while this meeting was going on.
Okay.
Sign up for the campus code red. No evacuation right now. We have evacuation plan in place.
Yep. Yeah, there's a code red, there's no evacuation notice. That's just what Chris was just saying. And we have contingency plan in place. And you'll be notified by NICSOL and other means through the media. We have Lake Co. News here, RBC here. And so, you know, pay attention to that media. If you read it on Facebook, there's no guarantees. I can't, don't, I just am so unreliable. Go to some serious news reliable resource or the sheriff's department or CAL FIRE for that information.
Thanks, Rob. I just wanted to confirm, just a second, I just want to confirm that when the Clearlake Police Department is putting out a NICSOL alert, we're also joining them with a press release. It's just not as fast. You got to wait for it to come out in the newspaper. If you don't have internet and you don't have a cellphone that's a smartphone. So, but it is going out. You're just going to get it a little bit late. Yes, ma'am?
How big is the Tubbs Fire? How far is the Milltown right now?
It's on the other side of the hill.
We just talked about that.
How many acres?
Don't know. Don't have that. We don't have that yet.
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to first say thank you to all the partners.
My husband's CAL FIRE, he's at Napa Fire. But I just came from the Sonoma County press
conference and I just relocated here two months ago. And I just wanted to bring up the fact that it seems like FEMA, Red Cross, federal agencies are giving more resources to those counties. And I feel like this county really needs those resources. And are they going to come to the county?
Well, once again, it's that whole cat out of the bag thing. We've been asking and we've received support from the governor and the state. We have not gotten the official word yet. Actually, yes, that happened.
We just, come on up here, Rob, because I was just told we didn't get confirmation. I don't want to report something that isn't true.
Congressman Thompson reported earlier, he had to go down to Napa. It's such a massive undertaking for him. But yeah, they did receive word. It's going to take time. They're not, they're going to start writing checks. So there's, it's going to take a little bit of time. And those other counties, they're not getting any resources either. Everybody's got to go through the whole process of the bureaucracy and the paperwork. And it is going to take some time. But Congressman Thompson has made a commitment and our board, we passed our resolution today, you guys will be doing yours day after tomorrow, which, and the state, the governor has already, they've included Lake County in all of it. And, yes, a disaster.
There's much about Lake County.
Well, we know about Lake County. I know. I know. And I know there's a, I know when you turn on channel two and they talk about Napa and Sonoma, it doesn't matter. Okay? We, believe me, I mean, I haven't gone through this. It makes you, you know, feel like you're known, or they know you're here. They know we're here. I'm telling you right now, I could not, I would take a bullet for Mike McGuire because he carries so much, and the others too. With Mike McGuire, he'll be up here tomorrow. This guy, he acts like he doesn't. We have good representation. Not just here locally, we have some really good people in our corner and they're going to fight for us. I don't, don't worry about that. We will get it. It's going to come. We have to do all the paperwork and we'll take care of all that. All these people, we'll take care of all that stuff. And so it will be taken care of.
My last question was, is there anything that citizens can do to help volunteer, help each other out, to get things going and support each other in a way?
There's Red Cross, there's Salvation Army. Talk to your churches if you're involved in that. I saw Russ Kramer here. I don't know if Rotary has anything going yet. They were unbelievable as far as the Clayton Fire and the Valley Fire goes. So I wouldn't be surprised to see your local Rotary Club begin to do some things. That time will come, but right now, it's kind of, it's the professionals, it's the firefighters, it's the city officials. But that time will come. But work with those organizations. The county and the city, and again, I don't want to speak for the city, but I'm kind of, you know, working with them on this. The county and the city will not be running donation centers or anything like that. So, you know, work with your churches and all that. There will be a lot of opportunities. Work within your own neighborhoods, you know, if you can. But as far as relying on the county and the city to coordinate volunteer efforts, probably very unlikely. And it's just a logistical nightmare. And I'll just give you an example. Everybody has good intentions. You know, volunteers are going to be flooded with donations and then all of a sudden, those volunteers have to go back to work, or they have to go back where they became from, and we're kind of left with it. So we have to just continue doing this with the professionals that we have right now and the donations. We don't want to accept donations. We don't, because it becomes another disaster. People are well-intended. We get, you know, five, we get five thousand pairs of underwear that I don't know what we're going to do with. You know, so that's the kind of stuff that happens. People mean well, but send gas cards, send gift cards to the local stores. Support your local stores. Support them every chance you get. Get gift cards to the kids for their clothes that have been, they need to be replaced for school. You know, everybody wants to go buy clothes and stuff for kids. Let them get their own clothes. Let them maintain some dignity to go do that. Get those things, let them do that. And the Rotary Club was, you know, very instrumental with that kind of stuff. So those are the kinds of things that you can do as a volunteer.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rob.
Since Rotary got a little plug there, I'd like to call up our Clearlake area president, Dirk Sluton, and Russ Kramer. They're members of LARCA, which is Lake Area Rotary Clubs. Come on up, guys. I'm calling on you. So, I'd also like to recognize an inspirational and just a powerhouse woman, Jennifer Strong, president of the Lakeport Club, and now I believe she's assistant governor within the Rotary group. When the Valley Fire hit, I can just give a little groundwork here and foundation. When the Valley Fire hit, people were amazing. Their hearts were softened by the damage that they saw and the devastation, and they began to donate. And they began to donate to clubs that they respected. And I'm so proud to be a Rotarian because our administrative costs are zero, pretty much. Every penny that was donated, as much as we could, went directly to the victims. So they began to donate, and I don't have the numbers, but our treasurer does, Russ Kramer, the amount that was donated there, and it's actually spurred it. And just as they were closing that down about the Clayton Fire hit, and we had to do this again. Well, and now we are here with the Sulphur Fire. And so LARCA is once again stepping up. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce our club president and Russ Kramer, both on the LARCA committee.
I wasn't expecting to speak. Yeah, LARCA started after the Valley Fire. And we thought we were going out of business last year and the Clayton Fire hit. And we were really sure we were going to go out of business here a couple of weeks ago. We're not. We're out there again. We're looking for donations. In fact, we're probably going to expand our coverage. We're meeting with our district governor and we'll probably actually be operating in the four, all four counties that were hit by this devastation. Mendocino, Napa, Sonoma, and ourselves. Russ had mentioned that when we, just for Lake County, over the past few years, we raised and distributed about nine-hundred-and-forty-one thousand dollars. I fully expected we'll probably go beyond that for this operation. So I'll let Dirk speak a little bit. He's our, he's a committee chair on the fire relief fund.
Thank you all for coming. LARCA was able to raise this money from all the Rotary Clubs in this country. And we're very proud of being a Rotarians. But we, with that money, we supported a lot of local business to be able to get started again. And that's what we want to do again. We want to make sure that local businesses can do their work again because they're kind of the backbone of the community. So we're now coordinating with all the counties, Lake and the Cino, Napa, and Sonoma. We have some meetings set up early on to see how we can coordinate all this effort. Hopefully, we'll be able to raise the same kind of money again and distribute it to all the good people here in Lake County. Thank you.
Where can we donate?
You can donate online. There's a website called LARCA5130.org.
Pardon me?
L-A-R-C-A, Lake Area Rotary Club Association.
Is there a local bank?
Well, we do our business with, yes, here locally, that prefer that you bring it in. Or online, there's a donation. You can do it online.
See, I'm not online on fire now, but I've got a friend who's a lot of all to do it.
Excellent. Or you can, yeah, you can bring it, bring it to any Rotarian, make the checkout to LARCA5130, or LARCA Fire Relief Fund. Okay. Thank you.
And last, just to kind of close this out, I wish there was still some more folks around. I'll get to you in just a second, is we have not gotten, as you heard, we haven't gotten everything together and we're flying the plane as we build with it. Looking for that disaster relief and SBA loans and things like that. So pay attention to those things that are coming up for assistance with rebuilding businesses and everything. Rob, you want to talk to that issue because again, you're the expert. So we're, I'm working with the city staff right now to put together what we call, it's a LAC, Local Assistance Center. And at that center, and we're working on where that might be. It could very well be here somewhere. We're working on those details. But we'll have representatives from the state and federal government there. FEMA comes in, FEMA will be there. State vital statistics, DMV, social security, we'll have social services, mental health, any agency that you can think of that is involved in the recovery will be there at that. And that'll run for a couple of weeks. We're going to try to get that thing up and running by sometime next week. And you'll be able to come in, fill out paperwork. You'll have people there that'll be helping you do that. And so we're working out the details on that, but that'll be coming real shortly. And then that'll transition into the cleanup and recovery through the state. Now, one of the things that you can do, if you have insurance, you can go talk to a local contractor right now. We have several within this county that understand very well how to do this. They'll be working with us through our landfill and we can make the, take care of the testing. They know how to do all that. And so you can begin that process right now with your own contractor or wait a little bit longer till they mobilize the CAL recycle. But we'll transition that LAC into that CAL recycle cleanup effort as well. So that'll be all happening within the next few days. Yes, sir?
Are there ongoing patrols for looters in the areas that are open?
Are there ongoing patrols for looters in the areas that are open? No, they will be reduced to standard normal coverage for the PD. Area, yes, under sheriff?
Are there additional patrol, additional by officers?
Thank you. So I guess we're still ramped up for another twenty-four hours. And in the county area and in the city area, around the Goose Neck and out to Crestview, are there still extra patrols out there? Yes, there are.
Thank you.
We ordered several officers from other areas and that was approved through OES. We have approximately thirteen officers outriding the areas just specific to the closed areas. They've been, we've had five areas in the parkwoods, five officers in the parkwoods, sorry, it's been a long couple of days, in the parkwoods area that are still out there. Just so you know that they, that they're still out there. And then as we do the hard closures in the other areas, we're going to resend them to those other areas as well. But a gentleman just came in, the Boyd family, they have seventy-something hot dogs out there. So if you're hungry, they're donating hot dogs out here, right outside the door here. He wanted me to mention that, so I just want to let you know. If you're hungry and you want a hot dog, I love hot dogs, but I can't eat seventy-five of them, so. Please help me with that.
If you could, you'd be the champ.
You'd be the champ. In the back, yes, ma'am.
So yesterday, you said about seven days. That's a way out of the Oakhurst Square area there. Do you think it's going to be long?
I said five to seven days because I really don't know. I said, please plan for, looking at, maybe I need to call on Rob again for this, what had, that happened in the Valley Fire recovery. It was a little longer than that. Yeah, it was a little bit longer than that in the Valley Fire because the activity was so widespread. Clayton Fire was much, much quicker. And so I suspect he's probably right. I think CAL FIRE wants to be really careful. And I totally get this. So they won't, they won't give it any heart, but it depends on them. It really relies upon them. We can't get in their way, just like Russ said. PG&E, they're in there working down power lines, doing all this stuff. The road closure at the county end is that Sulphur Bank Road there, and that's going to remain in place until CAL FIRE, it's not just our call, it's not just their call. CAL FIRE has a lot to say about it, more than anything. So it just kind of relies on them. Thursday, they're going to be having a meeting, their city council meeting. We'll probably know more by then as far as those areas. Second, yes, ma'am?
Maybe Rob will probably know better.
Probably.
Because you were talking about the resource centers.
Because you were talking about the resource centers, there are lawyers who do not have driver's license on them at the moment, and she's worried about getting stopped, like, what should she do since she is evacuated and she's still on the mountain side?
So, the question was if you evacuated so quickly that you didn't have your I D or other documents? I'm sure that the officers are understanding if you give a physical street address.
You can go to D M V right now too and take care of that, or my bail number is 263.
Really, really. Trying to keep it light, folks, Rob Brown, he's here all week. Yes, ma'am?
What if the evacuees are off now and put behind, is there any way for them to get back under the bus service? Is there a way?
Once again, Rob Brown, everybody, Rob Brown.
The Lake Transit's still operating as it normally does, if something happens tonight, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, I have the bus company.
Okay, well, we also are working with the school district, and Rob Young with the Lake County Office of Education is making arrangements if we need to, to transport folks with the school buses or Lake Transit, we're working with them right now.
Is there anybody here, anyone else here from Lake Transit? Ma'am, is there anyone else here with you from Lake Transit?
Unfortunately, no, I wanted to surprise myself, but my phone was up at Goose Neck.
So, this young lady's with Lake Transit, kinda the unsung heroes, if you could just please give her a round of applause for all the work that they're doing, shuttling people to and from and everything else, and just another little shout out to a wonderful person, her name's Wanda Gray, during the Valley fire, the backup of her bus melted while she was in Anderson Springs evacuating people out, they are so dedicated, and we really are in debt to you for your service, I really appreciate it, everyone here. Okay, we need to wrap it up, last couple of questions, Jessica.
I need a Nixel techie to help me.
See that good looking guy, where's Tim? Okay, there's a techie coming to see you. Last, you're okay, Tim, go back to sleep. Yes, sir?
About Sierra Drive or Silverado Line?
I'm sorry?
Sierra Drive or Silverado Line? Any information about?
What drive?
Sierra Drive?
Sierra Drive? What is the cross street?
Silverado Drive.
That's still closed, that's in the hard closure.
But you don't know about fire, how, how, how by?
Yeah, we don't have information on that. Well, that's down by Silverado Beach, in that area there. Okay. I think that's about it. Thank you all so much, again, please help your neighbors, if you've got things that you can offer, we sure appreciate the help.